Good evening. My name is Eric Lindstrom. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetland Commission meeting for the town of Monroe. It is January 8th, 2025, and the time is 6:40 PM. Will everyone please stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberating, and justiciable.
I'd like to have a brief moment of silence in remembrance of former President Carter, who passed away recently. Thank you. At this time, I'll take a roll call of all commissioners and staff present during tonight's HABR meeting. Please answer here or present, starting with myself, Eric Lindstrom, Chairman, here. Brian Kelly, Vice Chairman.
Here.
Rick Smith.
Here.
Jim Stewart is not here. Benjamin Sabia, Secretary.
Here.
Paul Fernandez.
Here.
Mark Zamary.
Here.
Franklin Gallagher is not here. Andrew Rammend, Inland Wetland Enforcement Officer.
Here.
Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. The Inland Wetland Mission Statement. The objective and purpose of the Inland Wetland Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses within the town of Monroe. Tonight's meeting procedure. Please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, Public Act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title if applicable at the outset of each occasion when that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body are participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission, during which and after which the commission will be asking the applicant questions. I ask that the applicants keep their presentations as concise as possible. The commission will then review town staff and other independent comments. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments be made to the chair or committee. After any and all comments pro, in opposition, or of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct, or a time limit of three minutes may be imposed. It's not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new materials entered in as evidence or testimony during their response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to inland wetlands related matters. Other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow a similar format, with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. The meeting follows our published agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are some changes to the agenda. I'd like to add three items. IPU 2025-01, file number 1517. It's 112 Richards Drive.
Where's that going?
That is, uh... Uh, that's going into... Committed use as of right.
As of right. What was the address?
Uh, 112 Richards Drive. Uh, Agent Approval IA-2025-01, file 1516, 145 Jockey Hollow Road. That'll go into agent approvals. And I have a correspondence to talk about, which I'll go on to correspondence. Okay, to add those to the agenda.
Take a motion to add the three noted topics to the agenda.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kelly to add those three items. Do we have seconds?
We'll second.
Second by Commissioner Sabia. All favor?
Aye.
All right. General public participation. Is there anybody in the chambers who would like to speak in a general nature about anything that's not on our agenda this evening? Anyone online? Okay, moving on then to regulated activities. It's like we have no regular regulated activities this evening, so then moving on to our regular meetings. First on the agenda is IWC 2024-11, file number 1509, 285 Cutler's Farm Road. Close construction of a 16-by-20 pavilion and grill at Wolf Park Beach uh, within the Upland Review area. Town of Monroe applicant James DeMayo, Town Engineer Representative. You said he is not here this evening?
James was not able to make it. I will read the exhibits into record. There's one exhibit. It is the application and plan set prepared by James DeMayo, the town engineer, received in 11/21 of 24. We looked at this at the last meeting, if you remember. It's the pavilion down at Wolf Park. It is within the Upland Review area. It's about 83 feet off of the water's edge.
Right, so barely made it into Upland Review area, right?
Right. Uh, we did talk about moving it, the possibility of moving it if, if it's sited where it is because of the proximity to the, uh, to the parking lot where cars would pull up and park and sightline issues. This is really the best location for it.
Right. Anybody have any questions regarding this?
There were seven sonotubes.
Right. Yeah, it was pretty straightforward, I remember. It's a good area, no problems for me.
I don't have any concerns with it, but moving it would be, what, 50, uh, 83? So, um, about another, close to 70 feet, right? 67 feet?
Uh, yeah, but, yes.
I don't know the answers.
In order to move it outside the area, there's, there's a barrier behind it, but you can't move it back.
Yeah, yeah.
And to move it off to the side would create a sightline issue. Which is why it's located where it is.
It's a grill, a pavilion, a pavilion in the sense...
It's a covered, it's a covered pavilion.
And a grill.
And a grill next to it, so...
It's like an open, sort of public grill.
Exactly, yes. Just like they have on the upper part of Wolf Park, where residents can come and use the pavilion and the grill.
Like in that parking, the place where people park.
By the volleyball, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Cattle.
So, should I, we accept?
Uh, you have to do it in deliberation, so you need a motion to close the regular hearing and move into deliberations.
Okay, a motion to close regular hearing and move to deliberations later.
We have Rick Smith to, uh...
A second.
And then a second by Commissioner Stanley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any others? Okay, moving on to IWC 2024-12, file number 1512, 106 Hammer Town Road. Proposal to remove sediment from existing pond for maintenance. Arnold and Madeline Marshall, applicant Alan Shepherd, NOK and Associates representative.
I'll read those exhibits into record. Exhibit number one is the application and plan set prepared by Alan Shepherd, received in dated 10, uh, 12/10/24. Exhibit number two is the preliminary review, prepared by myself, Andrew Brodmann, Wetland Enforcement Officer, received, uh, 12/10/24. Exhibit number three is alternative plans, number one and number two lumped them together in exhibit number three, prepared by NOK and Associates, received in 1/3 of 25. Exhibit number four is a bond form, uh, prepared by Alan Shepherd, dated 1/3/2025. Exhibit number five was a revised sediment removal plan, prepared by Alan Shepherd, PE, uh, dated, received in on 1/3 of 25. And exhibit number six, the town engineer's comments and his bond form, prepared by James DeMayo, town engineer, received in 1/7 of 25. Those are all the exhibits, and here to present is Alan Shepherd of NOK and Associates.
Hi, everybody. Uh, what we have before you is, we'd like to...
Please just state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Alan Shepherd, professional at J.R., partner in the firm of Delco. So, uh, what you have before you is an application to remove itself. Less than $10,000. And what happened this summer, we had storms. It's been soaking up slowly. It's been soaking up foliage over the years, the parcels and the plants. They've been there for 41 years, but this last storm, we had the summer in over. More than a dam bar, they did a pond, but they just would like to have that removed. And while we're in there doing that, we just want to freshen up the bottom of the pond and, you know, sediments that's been in there all these years. We, we're asking for them to do the work in the summertime right now. And, uh, you know, it will be 250 yards. That's about 14, 15 trucks. Well, you know, one day to go in there, take it out, we'll dewater it, dry it out on the lawn, uh, and then we'll pull it out and probably a day, maybe, day with one truck. We have two trucks running, we'll get done. I mean, two trucks will get done in one day. But if we have one truck, we'll do two. But within five days, we'll have everything wrapped up. That's what we have. We had to watch this flag fly, give them a can and some thought.
There's no plans to expand anything that's there. It's just...
No, no.
It's just kind of what's there.
No, we're gonna take this silt out, and then when we go in, they're gonna do native, try to put native plantings in, in the, where we're gonna actually have the truck come in and go live it, that's me. So, native plantings, whatever we have to replace, which we have.
Any questions? There's cameras?
No questions.
Question?
250 yards. That's a lot, that silt.
It's been 41 years.
Yeah.
You know, since, since, uh, so it's not really that much we can move more than that for ponds and stuff. It's probably like 14, 15 truckloads.
And, and you figure out how long it's gonna take to dewater?
The sandy stuff will dewater right away, and that's what I'm gonna put right by the garage there. So, you know, when we hit in the bottom, probably will dewater within a day. We're gonna do it in the summertime. Uh, but if it takes two days or three, it's not like exor muck, you know? This is pot, you know, so...
So you're gonna take, you're gonna take the loads of, every, every load, and you're gonna, you're gonna place it in a truck?
No, no. You're placing in the yard.
Right, I see the dewatering.
Yeah, you're placing in the yard, let it pile, let it sit there. The sandy material that's planted, so it looks like rotting, that'll drain out pretty fast, but it's, it's probably... But the, the 40 years of sediment that we'll probably find on the bottom, it's probably gonna be like a topsoil type of sediment.
Yeah.
It's not a pond muck like we have in some spots. So that settles right out within a day. It'll bake out in a day, if it's a summer day.
Is that saleable?
I think they'll probably repurpose what they have. It's not really resalable, because they have, uh, it'll be some topsoil type of material and the sandy material mixed together. Uh, if someone treats it and lives it, they can reuse it. Is it profitable? No, but we recycle, you know? Uh, there's not a lot of money.
How many truckloads?
14. Uh, 15. 14.
And where, where are you gonna put it?
Depends on the contractor. They'll take it to their contract yard. Generally, they take it to their yard and they'll, um, like I said, recycle or cut it in. Normally, we take and cut it in with sand, but I think with the sand there, we can mix that. They may have to treat it with lime, make some topsoil with it. That's a lot of free...
Okay, I see on note nine, any trees removed or going to replace with native tree saplings?
Yes.
No, note nine. Are you, do you know of any trees that are coming down, or just, uh...
No, there won't be, no, but there won't be any trees coming down. But there's a couple portions that we're gonna have to...
And you've looked at it, there's the replanting and... I was, yeah, I was actually out at the job site, uh, took a look at what was there. Uh, and in the plan, you'll notice that they are planning on digging the material that they need to make their accessway into the pond, setting it aside and replanting it. And in doing that, they're also adding new plants, and the new plants are appropriate native plants. Go on to your opinion on that. Yep.
Then we, I would say, my client's been great as far as working with them on native plants and stuff, picking out native plants. Uh, you know, they take care of the property well. It's nice to go over and show there's native plants that look great and they're valuable, you know? So it's, it's been a quick process, I think, with the, with the clients.
Not to mislead at all, uh, the plants that they have coming out and setting aside, they're not all natives. But they're there, they're existing, and they're gonna put them back. The new plants that they're gonna bring in are the natives, to make that clear.
Looks to me like all of its Upland Review area? I was trying to figure out where...
Uh, a lot, yeah, pretty much. Yeah.
So, and that's, that's, you know, part of this process is you go over with the homeowners and stuff like that. I mean, they know they have weapons on the property, but just to go through the process and see how the process works, you know, it's...
It's like there's a lot of positives.
Yeah, okay. I just have a brief question. Um, so out of the entire area of the pond, I see the part that says sand. Is that specifically the area that's going to be, uh, worked, or is it the other portions?
We're gonna do the whole pond, yeah. Cause that's the one that came in the, in the storm, that, that kind of storm damage, you know? We had a lot of, you know, total area, right, that had issues. But, um, like, while we're there, we might as well freshen up the rest of it.
Yeah, I have no other questions, or anything else?
Yeah, I don't think I have any concerns. No questions?
Uh, I, just a quick question for me. I see that you got the stream marked in there. I'm just curious, what direction the water flowing is it?
It flows, um, basically, it flows, um, north, south, right here.
I'm assuming it flows from the, only south to north because of the elevations, but...
It flows to the west. No, it's a little odd in this area, hold on.
Flowing out to the bottom, right, from the left.
My question?
Okay.
Good. Can you guys? Okay. All right. Hey, any questions from anybody?
No, I just didn't get where, see, this is a stream, right? It's like it goes north, north, south. I'm sorry, I just didn't follow your question.
I was just wondering which way the water flows, right?
If it's west, that's west, but it looks like it's a north, the stream is north, south.
Right.
No? Clarify that, please.
Yeah, the, um, the, uh, the... Oh, yes, let me clarify that. If, the stream itself, it's going northward, it's going north. It generally follows a west, westernly direction down below, but, um, on the property, the outlet could be flowing.
Okay, got it.
It's odd in the area, if you're not...
Right, it is a little dry, but that's what I was saying. The elevations are a little higher on the bottom of the page compared to the top. That's why I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Most of our pilots, we've learned.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Motion to close this and move on to deliberations?
Then again, I motion that we close the regular, to go to deliberations later.
Smith and a second?
A second?
A second.
My question for Fernandez, all favor?
Aye.
Uh, no public hearings, so now moving on to deliberations.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so, why don't we start with what we were just talking about, work, work our backwards?
Uh, on the agenda, it's, it's the other way around. On the agenda, it's IWC 2024-1, Cutler's Farm first.
Okay. We need to deliberate? I mean, I think we're all okay with it.
All right.
So, we just need a motion to approve?
Yeah, any returns?
Any, no, any additional, um, any additional conditions to the approval? Or just standard conditions?
One, Alex, no? I think we're pretty much good to go, so we just need a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve the standard conditions. Somebody makes a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the standard conditions.
Do we have a second? We have a second by Commissioner Smith?
A second, I hope. No, he got, yeah.
Thirded by...
Second by Rick Smith.
Fourth by Paul.
All favor? Any others?
A zero, it's okay.
Moving on to the next one?
Luck with that.
What's the next one?
So the next one is the one they're walking out with.
So, do we wanna...
Yeah, IWC 2024-12.
Should we clarify? I think we just got...
Let's just move on.
Yeah, so, all right, so, um, same question. Do we wanna approve this with any conditions or just the way we got?
I would approve with the conditions that are already listed on the paperwork, so...
Anybody else have any other comments or suggestions?
Can I, can I ask you, uh, Andrew, what is the, I may be shame on you for not knowing this, but on the map, I saw just that comment on note, 60-inch, or 60-foot restrictive per mass 1050. Like, there's an area...
Note at the bottom, yeah.
It runs across the front of the property, kind of through the existing garage on the outer edge of the pond. What is that? What is that? I've never seen that. What is restricted? And what is 60 feet? They saying that there's like that tree height restriction or something? Like, I've, I've never seen that on the map.
And I cannot answer that.
Not that that has any, uh, limiting factor in the outcome of that.
Right, it's off the, it's off the property.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what that is.
Okay, I was just curious.
Any reason to put any conditions on this approval?
Other than what I think is already existing, does anybody else have anything else they want to add to it? No? Do we have a motion to approve?
With standard conditions.
Standard, motion to approve with standard conditions.
Right. I'll second.
Commissioner Sabia, all favor?
Aye.
All right. Two for two.
Can make the difference about the grill, and there being priority for a 3500 softball.
Yeah.
Maybe that would sound like I would make the decision for bias or...
There you are.
Yeah, right, or...
All right, um, moving on to bond releases. Um, 107-05, file number 544, 550 Main Street. Proposal to release $10,000 bond for work that was never implemented.
Okay, so correction, it is I-07-05, file number 544, 550 Main Street. Back in 2008, uh, there was an application for, uh, and actually, the property owner is here, uh, Nag, Mr. Nagy, uh, where there was a bond put up for, uh, they were gonna move off this property, so the, the bond was put up for, the application was for demoing the building and doing a remediation to that property in order to move off of that property. Um, the applicant never moved off that property, therefore never implemented any of the work. We've been holding the bond since 2008. They never asked for the bond back. So we now have a request for the bond to be released, and I did a bond report on it, and it's ready for your approval.
I think as long as the application is then...
The application is null and void.
Then, I don't...
The application is null and void, and if they want to do this work in the future, they have to start the whole process all over again.
Right.
In which case, they'll be asked to put up another bond.
Right, yeah. Any...
I, 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 I listened to some discussion.
No, I'm just asking if anybody... Okay, so we need a...
I'll release him.
Come on up and state your name for, for the record, name and address.
Is the permit expired?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Your permit has been expired.
I didn't, I wasn't sure on that one.
Yes.
Did you understand what he said? That if you do decide to move forward with this project, you have to...
Correct, so no reason why not.
Right.
Uh, so the motion is to approve the release of the bond in the amount of $10,000?
Yes, please.
Make the motion?
I'm making the motion to release the bond, $10,000.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Sabia. All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming tonight.
Moving on to, uh, IWC Agent Activities Report. Uh, so we have agent approvals for IA-2024-23, file number 1514, 128 Barn Hill Road. Uh, clear existing vegetation within the Upland Review area.
Uh, so, 128 Barn Hill Road, they came in for an application to remove a tree, um, in the Upland Review area. I gave them the agent approval to remove that one tree. They also had a demo permit to, to demo the house that's on there. They went past their limit of disturbance, um, that was previously issued. So, in going out and looking at their silt fence and saw that it was, uh, beyond their limit of disturbance, I had, and because it's in the Upland Review area, I had them put together, uh, a new application for, um, an agent approval. for an agent approval to restore the area that they had disturbed. So I asked them to, part of the approval conditions of that agent approval was to plant three native trees, twelve native shrubs, install wetland markers on the property and to reseed that area. And they went ahead and that's in the process.
So demo, with the demo of the house, that's the old.
With the demo, yes, that's the old house, it's, it's at the very bottom of, of Barn Hill.
It's in pretty good disrepair.
Yes, we talked about it already, right? Right, but in their, in their process of demoing the house, they, they went further than they were supposed to. So in, I, I thought.
Was it intentional or just they happened to?
I think they had to, I think in positioning the machines, where they wanted to position the machines, they went further than, than they were supposed to.
Right.
So I asked them to do some remediation and I did it as an agent approval.
Right. Uh, any questions about that?
Yeah, any questions on it? I A A twenty twenty five dash oh one, file number one, five, one, six, is one forty five Jockey Hollow Road. Proposal was to extend the existing front porch. This was, I think this was one of the, this is the agent approval that I added to the agenda.
Yes.
So this just came in on Monday, which is why I had to add it to the agenda because there wasn't time to put it on the agenda before. They're extending their front porch, it's ninety feet away from potential wetlands. All established lawn between the wetlands and the front yard or, and the front porch. And they're extending the front porch, I think by another eight or ten feet. Conditions of the agent approval that I gave them was to install silt fence and to install wetland markers in the backyard. Right now, it's, it's in the, the appeal process, so they, they've put public notice in. And we're waiting for, for the appeal process to be done with and then they can start with that. Violation. I W V twenty twenty four dash oh seven, file number fifteen thirteen, is one ninety seven Cross Hill Road. Clearing of vegetation, importing driveway material, plastic pots, pallets, various other landscape materials. This is tied together with the thirty Pepperidge Road, which we had talked about last time. So I issued a new violation to one ninety seven because thirty Pepperidge created the violation on one ninety seven. I had previously issued the violation to thirty Pepperidge, but I was waiting to issue the violation on one ninety seven. So I issued a violation to one ninety seven.
You heard from them?
I have, so if you want an update on that, the two lawyers are talking to each other in order to give permission for thirty Pepperidge to access the property on one ninety seven so that they can have the wetlands delineated and they could start the process of putting together a site remediation plan.
Does it sound like they're gonna?
Yes.
Work this out?
Yes.
Usually when you have lawyers involved, it gets a little.
Yes. The property owner at one ninety seven was asking me what happens if they don't give them permission to go on their property and then their, their property has an active violation on it. So it behooves both of them
Right.
to allow thirty Pepperidge to access the property, to remediate the property, to remove the violation from one ninety seven.
Otherwise, the owner of one ninety seven's.
Otherwise, the owner of one ninety seven has a property that has a violation. So I'm confident that it's all going, it's just going to take some time because legal processes.
Yeah. Okay.
So that's where we are in that process.
That's, that's except, like, obviously.
Yeah, I, I, yes, I mean, there's nothing else.
Forward progress.
Yeah, it is forward, it is forward progress and thirty Pepperidge has been calling me and updating me with every little detail, so I'm, I'm very well aware of, of the process, she's not letting it go.
Just for the record, Ryan, I did visit that thirty Pepperidge.
That was the property that you visited, yes.
Something that I think was, I, I suppose I did not like fully grasp ahead of the site visit. The, the one ninety seven property is a undeveloped wooded space. They weren't in a neighbor's yard as you, as, as I was envisioning. They were in the woods behind their property that was just owned by someone else.
They just didn't understand what the property was.
But it was, it's moderately wooded and there's no openings except for where this entry into the woods is. And we were told that no trees were taken down. But looking at the property from other sides, you and I did that, and I did that after that as well. I find that difficult.
I, I, I am in agreement with you.
Is it obvious, like, can you see cut stumps or trees down?
Well, he said that there was no, no cut trees except, and then he turned and saw one that was obvious and said, oh, except that one, that one, you know, it was a.
Whatever.
Forest. So just, just, you know, I'm just.
It was a pretty well wooded lot and, and yeah, that'll be determined by the wetland scientist. Hopefully, who will come together with a remediation plan that will hopefully satisfy the commission.
There was no, there was a pebble at a place. This guy, this gentleman is a landscaper, I guess, or has a landscaping service, had probably half a dozen people there. And we were there and there's not, it's a lovely piece of.
His property is very well maintained.
It'd be interesting to see if that pergola is.
On the property or not.
Yeah, that'd be a shame if it wasn't.
Yeah, well.
Hopefully, they'll buy the property.
In order for the surveyors to get on that property to survey and figure out where that line is, they need permission from one ninety seven. And that's where we're in the process of.
I guess a curiosity question, where it just kind of reminded me, and I think we discussed the possibility that the owners may do that. Are they contemplating purchasing that property or?
We had given them the option, or we had talked about the option of doing that, I don't see why they would, but that's up to them. That, that's up to them.
And they can't, they won't be able to use it as they had.
They'll still have to remediate the property, so I don't.
They could do it on their own and not have to worry about satisfying other owner.
This to me is like a policeman stopping you and saying, did you know how fast you were going? And you, I don't know. You know, and, and he writes you ticket for eighty five because you were at twenty five. I can understand that if you're driving forty five in a twenty five, but it's, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty outstanding.
I can say that yes, I could see there's certainly a violation, but I don't think that the property owners, I could understand that the property owners didn't realize. It's just the woods in the backyard, if they didn't.
Okay, neither here nor there.
Neither here, neither here nor there.
It's for them to work out.
It's for them to work out.
Right.
For the moment, as long as, like we said before, as long as they continue to make progress, that's fine. But if they don't, then we're gonna have to do something or move it along if we have to.
Yes, I, I don't anticipate that based on the conversations that we've had. She's very concerned that they made a mistake and she's very concerned about fixing and, and, and very concerned about fixing that mistake.
Maybe, maybe the biggest concern in my mind is that it's a, he's a landscape. He is in landscaping business, I don't know exactly to what it's, you know, landscaping engineer, whatever, whatever it is that he ultimately is to have done those things even unknowingly like that. So again, when I look at, at this, you know, I know we're gonna talk about it later. The goal is to get people to just come and ask the right, ask questions, ask what questions they should be asking before they do it. And so that's a perfect example, somebody that may be making, influencing other people's decisions, just did it himself, right? That's kind of the bigger.
Right.
Right.
To be concluded at a later date.
Yep.
Okay, so moving on.
Hopefully, it is a lesson learned for that.
Oh, yeah.
Service as well.
It will be.
Thank you for the update, and it sounds like, again.
They've been updating me, they've been updating me almost every week. So I'm, I'm fairly confident that they're on top of it. And if they, if they're not, I am so.
We're not.
Moving on, I have a couple of voluntary compliance, just to inform you what we've been up to. Twenty six Lorraine Drive. Materials have been, been stored in wetlands. I got a complaint, a written complaint from twenty Lorraine Drive, about twenty six Lorraine Drive. So I went out there, sent them a voluntary compliance letter. They've got an old chicken coop, he's got a canoe, a drain pipe and some chicken wire and some things that are actually in the wetlands. So I asked them in a voluntary compliance letter to remove those, those materials from the wetlands. And gave them a time, and gave him a time limit of spring of twenty twenty five. I didn't ask them to put up any wetland markers because they're already there. The wetland markers are already there on site. I have voluntary compliance on one twelve Richards Drive. There was a boat and a trailer being stored in what is probably the upland review area, not actual wetlands. So I issued them a voluntary compliance letter to have that, have those moved outside of what could be the upland review area. The only way to determine that is to have soil scientists come in. I didn't see it necessary to actually delineate those wetlands. Just get them away from the upland review area. They complied with that and you'll see a little bit later in here. This is also going to tie into the permitted as of you, as of right, permitted use as of right application that I have. So I'll talk about that in a minute. But yeah, so they removed the boat, they removed the trailer outside of the upland review area. And I asked them to put wetland markers up so that if it happened in the future, there's no excuse. Voluntary compliance to fifty two Patchogue Trail. Depositing yard debris in the upland review area, I got a written complaint from fifty six Patchogue Trail. That number fifty two Patchogue Trail was dumping what he thought was bamboo and other materials right next to a stream. So I went out, took a look at it. It was not bamboo, it was yard debris, it was leaves, it was needles. It's a little bit of an odd situation where it's in front of the house of fifty two Patchogue Trail, but it is a, what's called a paper road. So it's technically owned by the, the property is technically owned by the town, but not maintained by, by the town. But there's, there's a pipe coming out and with the storms, it had washed a lot of a lot of the soil away from where that pipe empties out, the discharge of that pipe. And fifty two Patchogue Trail was trying to fill in that area. They were trying to fill it in with loose material. So my solution to that was, you know, I see the need for filling that in, the town is not responsible for filling that in. We, we don't take responsibility for the maintenance on that road. If you'd like to fill that area in, you can do so with stones that will not move. So I had them take that material out of there if they want to fill it in. Go ahead, fill it in, but fill it in with something that's not going to wash into the stream and then get carried down the stream and create a problem down there.
Two neighbors go out again?
Yes, so now you have fifty two Patchogue Trail that filed a complaint against fifty six Patchogue Trail that they were piling up their yard, their yard debris, which was cleaning up leaves and needles off of one side of their property and blowing it all over into the other side of the property, which is upland review area. When I was out there, I saw there was, you know, three or four feet of leaves and issued him a voluntary compliance letter telling him not to have such deep, you know.
Were you just leaving them there or they just piled up to?
He was, he was clearing off one part of his property and blowing it into the woods. Okay, so his manicured part of the property, he was taking that yard debris and he's blowing it into what is upland review area. He didn't realize that that's a no-no, you can't import material into upland review area. Without getting crazy, I asked him, you know, not, you know, to remove some of it. He didn't have to go all the way down to soil because we don't want exposed soil either. Where, so he removed that pile and took it off site. And now knows that in the future, he, he is not supposed to be doing that.
They just hate seeing it, put it in the middle of it as an enforcement officer.
What's that?
See you being a policeman on the, but I, I understand.
I didn't realize, but that is the job.
It's part of the job.
It's just the job.
Need. Okay, it's okay.
All right, so those were my voluntary compliance issues for the last couple of weeks. We could talk in general discussions about how you would like to see that in the future. All right, because I kind of made a little bit of a change to the agenda, adding this to the agenda. We could talk about that under general discussion.
Right.
And you want to move on?
Yep, moving on to permitted use as of right. So we have one twelve Richard Drive.
Yep, I P U dash twenty twenty five dash oh one, file number fifteen seventeen, one twelve Richard's Drive. The proposal is to install raised, a raised vegetable garden and fence it in, in what is potentially wetlands and upland review area. So this is in front of you for, for the following reason. They have an as of right to to farm in a wetland area, okay? Let's see. This was the one where there was a boat being stored in the wetlands and they moved the boat out of wetlands in a different spot. They want to install a vegetable garden. It is an as of right to install a vegetable garden, however, in the regulations, it states that farming, farming is permitted as of right. But it also says that the filling in of wetlands and water courses requires a permit, even in instances where road construction or the erection of buildings is directly related to the farming operation. Permitted as of right activities do not include the filling of wetlands or water courses under any circumstances. So if you'll see here, he's raising the vegetable garden beds by six inches. I don't believe that is what the regulations. I don't interpret the regulations to, to, to mean that. I interpret the regulations by filling in of wetlands.
And felt to plant on the ground, essentially.
Right, I mean, they are planting in the ground. If you'll notice, he's, he's he's called out no fertilizers, no pesticides, that's his, part of his practice of, of how he would like to you know, treat this vegetable garden. So I think, you know, to me, it's all about whether or not you interpret it as raising the bed six inches, is that filling in of wetlands?
Yeah, I think it is, you're bringing in foreign materials, so you're.
You're bringing in foreign materials.
So I think you're filling it up.
Okay.
Does the intention, the, the as of?
The as of right.
As of right is essentially if he could plant in the ground without any outside soils being brought in, then he can do that without discussion.
Without a permit.
But the fact that he wants to put a wooden structure in place.
Yep, and the fence, keep in mind, keep in mind, the fence around it to keep the critters out is bringing materials in. Okay, so therefore then my question to the commission would be with those, with those changes, can we issue him an agent approval? Or do you still want to see it before you as an I W C? I could, if it meets with your approval, then I can issue an agent approval for a vegetable garden to be. for a vegetable garden to be created within the URA.
What's the tree situation? I see a picture of it.
Say again?
What's the tree situation? Is he gonna, once he puts the garden in, is he gonna want to take down some trees too?
No, no, he knows, part of the approval will also be wetland markers. So he knows that he cannot take down trees.
There is a book right close by. And I do appreciate his, his commitment to organic gardening, that's very nice. If he could easily sell the house to somebody else who decides that they are big fans of Monsanto. I, I, I I like the fact that people are doing vegetable gardens in the backyard, I just. I don't know, I'm on the fence.
On the fence, well, his question was, do you want?
This fence.
Are you, are you? His question was, do you want to let him approve it or do you want it to come through the commission?
I think maybe it should come to us.
So, that's the question at the moment.
You think so?
How do we, how do we vote on that? If just one person wants to do that, then we have to.
We have to make a motion.
They couldn't make a motion to either let him do an agent approval or.
The motion is to deny the application. Deny that the application is a permitted use as of right.
Right, first, and then.
That's first. Then I can, and then we need to, and then you need to just tell me how you want to see this. Because it's a little, you know, it's, it's in that gray area where I think an agent approval is, is appropriate. Or an IWC is, is certainly appropriate. Either way, he's going to have to get a soil scientist to delineate the wetlands because now we're going to really need to know where that is. Whereas if it was an as of right, he wouldn't need to do that because he's got an as of right, but if, if the, the commission's determination is that by bringing in material, it, it does not meet the conditions of as of right.
Therefore it needs to.
Therefore it needs to go through one of the applications.
Right.
And is there the option for him not to bring in material and just plant in the ground? And is that as of right?
That would be an as of right because he's not, he's planting in what's already there.
Right.
Unless he's still.
He would still need to, he would still need to put up a fence, I mean, you can't have a vegetable garden.
So either way, he's going to need to pull a permit.
Okay.
I think.
The garden is in the upper review area.
It's in the wetland.
The garden is in potential wetlands. We do not know where the wetlands are exactly until we get a soil scientist out there to delineate it.
So before, all right, maybe we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. Maybe the first thing we have to do is just say, this is, we don't believe this is an as of right. Pause. And then bring it back to him and say.
What do you want to do?
What do you want to do?
Yep.
And give him a chance to maybe do something different.
Okay.
There's no reason for us to get too far ahead of ourselves.
I think I agree with that because I'm just, as I, as I look at it, I, I have questions before. Like I am willing to say that I think it should be an agent approval. I'd like to let it be an agent approval, but I wonder about the fence. What type of fence, the height of it?
So then you're going to want to see it.
I wonder about the walkways, like what is he, is he going to use material for the walkways?
Okay, so I do know that that was not, it, it was just that area to be left blank. But he's going to be walking on it, so no, it's not going to be mulched. His paths are just going to be soil. And the beds are going to be raised.
Yes.
And compost brought in.
It's unfortunate because I feel like the, the permitted, just my opinion, permitted use as of rights. If we were talking about the organic materials to raise the beds. And I don't know if it's like a framed raised bed, I don't get the impression that it is, it almost sounds like it's just that, that organic material.
The way he described it to me, it is, there's no wood going in.
Right.
There's fence posts going in.
Right.
And there's, and there are lines of
Yeah.
good composted soil to, to grow vegetables.
Yeah, so I almost feel like it's like, it could be this close.
Which is why, which is why I'm throwing it to you.
If there was just a little detail about the fence ahead of time, maybe.
Given what we know so far.
Yes.
Our, it sounds like our inclination is to deny his as of right application.
Motion to deny the application.
Unless he gives us further details that.
Yeah, can we do that? Can we go back to him and just say more detail around the fence?
I absolutely can.
He can put it back in front of us and say, this is what I meant, and then we could say, oh, now it meets the criteria.
Before we deny it, maybe give him the opportunity to provide some more detail over that fence and that's, you know.
Okay, so, so let's do this, let's make a motion to deny the application as is a permitted use as of right.
Given what he's submitted.
Given what he's submitted.
He can re-sign it.
So let's make that motion.
Right.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to deny his permitted use as of right application based on the content included currently.
And a second?
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Xavier, all in favor?
All right. Yeah, it's six to zero.
Okay, so on that.
I understand that this is not a, like this is, you can bring this back with some alterations and.
Okay, my suggestion at that point is going to be this, so that we don't go back and forth and back and forth.
Right.
So let's not ping pong this. I could have him attend the next meeting and have him with more detailed, with a new application as of right.
Right.
With more detail. What can I tell him that you would be looking for in that detail so that he doesn't have to come back and forth?
Right, well.
So fence details?
Right, and I was going to say, maybe you could do a little more research on this adding of material, you know, maybe, maybe there's an appropriate, like maybe he can.
They leave it, they really leave it open to interpretation, I mean, that is the way it's stated.
Well, maybe he could take it from a different part of the same property and move it. You know what I mean? If he's taking the same material from, from over here to over there, maybe that's okay, you know?
Yeah, I think additional information, I'd like to know the volume of the organic leaf and wood compost, the volume that would be added in.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know how relevant it is at the end of the day, but I'd be curious to know what he plans on planting in that space. And I definitely would like to know about the fence, its dimensions, its materials.
Right. How deep the fence goes, too, I was going to say, how deep it is.
Are they metal stakes? Are they going to be?
Formed by formal wood posts.
That have to get dug in? Or is it just
Right.
metal posts that you hammer down? That's a big difference.
I think just to kind of, you know, cover it generally, where he could answer more specifically is just two things, I would ask, what is the specific material that he plans on using, number one? And then number two, which would cover, I think, some of the other concerns, is, is that material currently native to the property? Right? Because I think, I think we said if it's native to the property, like, it's great, you know?
Right, you can see in this proposal, he's actually called out what type of compost
Yeah.
he wants to bring in, from which manufacturer.
So he was bringing it from outside.
Right, and if that's, you know, then that could be a condition of his approval. That he can't use that material.
That's, that's positive point that he's, that he's.
Yeah, I will say, I will say that if we're looking for him to use material that is on-site, that's creating more destruction in one area.
Right, no, I understand.
So I, I think that's detrimental to what we're trying to do, also from his standpoint, it probably is not good gardening soil.
Right, which is why he wants to break something down.
Right.
I just want to let the commission know that this is, the wetlands is right there, there is a brook going, going
Yeah.
South to north, north to south in that area that hooks up with the Farmil River, which will, if, if it was a disturbance, then it could disturb more than his own backyard.
I think also, I think in doing this, I also had him put silk fence up around the back, the downhill side of it.
Yep.
Okay, I know what we have to do. All right, moving on.
Onto correspondence.
Correspondence, okay, so correspondence, just bringing this to your attention. I got an application in the mail from Solitude Lake Management Company out of Massachusetts to apply pesticides for the continued maintenance of Jockey Hollow Lake. This is something that they come to us every three years and let us know, the application is approved by DEEP and issued to Solitude Lake Management. And I guess they've been treating the lake for vegetative growth. I think it went back fifteen years or so. So this is just renewing that for the next three years.
Does that company have violations against it within the last decade or so?
I can look, I.
It'd be interesting. It is a factor.
Okay, I would imagine that DEEP would not.
I'd imagine so too, but don't.
I, I, I did not, I did not look into it, I will look into that.
I'm an agency and I may not pick up every detail.
Have to do anything about that.
Wait, there's nothing we need to do, there's nothing we need to do about it in the future.
Are they responsible for just surrounding the lake, the lakeside or the upper fields too?
Not the upper fields, it's just for the lake, the aquatic vegetation. Research solitude.
Just because they do or don't have a violation doesn't mean that they're doing it right or wrong, it's just, I'm just looking for something.
You're looking, you're looking to see that they're.
They go to their closet.
Okay. I can look into that. Okay.
So then moving on to general discussions. So we got our minutes on previous meeting. Did everybody got an emailed copy of the minutes? Did anybody go through and see anything that they saw? Because I, I went through it when I got it. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary, I just didn't know if anybody else did, I didn't receive any emails on that or anything. If nobody has anything else, I will make a motion to approve of that. We have a motion to approve the twelve eleven. Twelve eleven, twenty twenty-four minutes. Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
All right. I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
And who seconded? Thank you.
And then last but not least here is public outreach. brochure here?
Yep. I was looking for at this point, just anybody's input to sort of, I figured I would compile everybody's thoughts on this, if anybody had any notes to write down.
I was scanning through it, I mean, I, it's a lot of content.
Yep.
And I'm wondering if we should try to consolidate, because I feel like we've kind of repeated a lot in there.
It's too wordy, not enough graphics.
It's just duplicative, right?
Correct.
So it's, you know, it'd be less wordy if we dedup it a little bit, right?
Correct.
It's gonna matter how we do that.
Right, and I, and I'm wondering if, if this should be more of a like call to action, rather than being the information packet, maybe it says, hey, here's a couple tidbits, but go to our website.
Like a stepping stone.
Yeah, like maybe you throw a QR code on there so people could just bang it on their phone and now they're getting all the details, but we give them, you know, four or five of what we maybe consider the most critical points, be like, hey, make sure you know about this.
Yeah.
And other stuff over here.
I, I love that idea, I like the QR, QR code.
I don't know that we have, I don't know that we have the ability to do that, I, I.
I can make one.
Yeah.
Okay, then we do.
It's better than a link because the link they're going to have to type in.
Right.
They don't pick that up from the site.
Right.
With a hard copy, well, it's done.
Right. Everybody's got a QR code these days. And it can go right to like the full-blown version of this that has your frequently asked questions page, your definitions page, you know, all that, but we do need help still with getting that.
That was the one, also when Andrew and I spoke with IT, that exactly was the thought, it's like, it would be like the funnel or entry point, the intake into.
Right.
Okay, now here's the full-blown, you know, you double-click into it and here's the full-blown details of what you're seeing here, you know? I think we didn't want to scare anybody away.
Well, I mean, here's my thoughts on that, if, if we're going to have it a lot less wordy and it's going to say a couple of things. Get them to go to that QR code and now go and start reading it. Should we maybe be a little bit more, I don't want to say scary, but give them something a little more like dire, like.
Right.
If it's just for information.
Right, people aren't going to care, but if.
Right, if it's going to hit them in their.
Before you do this, make sure you check this out.
So maybe it should be a little bit more aggressive.
Yeah, it's like the before you, it's like the before you dig.
The call before you dig.
Yeah.
Couple, a couple of things that crossed my mind when I was looking at it. When I was looking at the commonly asked questions, I know why we are listing all of those.
Yep.
But again, it is wordy and like, I think there are other examples outside of my backyard, like dry, can I extend, you know, like you're giving examples that I think are relatively common, but there are others as well.
Yeah.
And I think rather than asking that as a Q and providing an A, I think maybe if we, like, like you can create a graphic ask before you act. Like make it, as much as you're, I understand what you guys are saying about make it scary, I think most people don't neglect to come in because they're not scared. I think it's because they're like, they're aware, ah, this is crazy, I don't understand, and there is a stigma around working with, with, with the local government in a general sense, you know? And I think when you come in, you get a far different experience. I have firsthand experience with that, when I went to sell my house, I was told that my septic failed. And I was like, there's no way, I've never had an issue, and I came and I talked to the sanitarian. And I was like, so glad I talked to this guy, like he, everything made sense. He was super friendly, that was the best, you know, hour I spent in the whole process. People don't do that because they, they they fear that it goes over their head and it slows down the process and it makes it confusing. So, I don't know, like, if you just ask before you act and then you give those as examples, like, these are common topics that happen in town. If you aren't sure, ask before you act and.
I like to ask before you act.
Right, it's a simple, you can make it a graphic and it can take up a little bit of space. And then you can still have Q and A, what are the wetlands and stuff like that.
And for more, click this, you know.
I put like question and then answers too, because like I felt like I was playing a little bit of.
Well, we went back and forth on that a little bit, but that's good feedback, right? We went back and forth on that because it was almost like, I think we were thinking, and keep me honest here, is that okay, here's the question here, let me think about what the answer is. And I'm not looking at it because it's not right underneath, so I have to go to this other page, but.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a good, it's good feedback, you know? And I'll just say one other thing too, I think that everything that the commissioners, Andrew, are talking about now and recommending still is not as, I think it's still toned down from what we originally saw, right? So I think it's good.
Yeah, no, I started, I started it pretty aggressive because that was what was in my mind.
So it brings it up a level, but it's not like.
I don't think we should, we should push the concept of like, you guys should be scared.
Right.
Because that is, will just be another reason.
Yeah, I want it to be scary, but I want it to have some meat to it, like.
Yeah, I feel you. The other thing I was going to say, this is a small thing, but the first thing I noted. And then I looked at this a little bit and I started to question myself, and when I opened it, this was the first thing I looked at.
Yep.
And avoiding common mistakes is really important, but it's also kind of negative, like you're going to make mistakes. And so at first I thought like, put this over here, but then I was like, well, I understand why you'd put it there.
It's because of the real estate on the pamphlet, basically.
Right, so I thought maybe if you, like if we broke this up and like the ask before you act, like if you put the, the more abbreviated Q and A over here maybe even, I don't know, just like the you're going to make mistakes part not being the first thing they see is maybe a way create positivity when you open the pamphlet, you know what I mean? I don't know.
Maybe, yeah, maybe, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I totally agree with.
And maybe this becomes a, how can we help, right? Fold it in half instead of a tri-fold, you know, just to get different real estate laid out differently, you know? But, yeah.
Tri-foils are handy though.
Eight by eleven is eight by eleven.
Thinking more, if we had, I don't know, and I don't know how it is with the real estate of the, of the paper, but just like.
but just like, an image of a property, it could be a fake property, doesn't have to be anything. But it says like, just because you bought this property doesn't mean that you could do whatever you want on it. And like, show like, here's a wetlands line, here's an upper review line, you can't do anything unless it's brought up to the town.
Actually, that's a great idea too, right? Because there are probably a majority of the residents don't even know what URA stands for. And then if you tell them what it stands for, they probably still don't know what it means. So you have the lines, a hundred from, you know, then a hundred and fifty from water, right? Like, I think.
Right, and maybe that's a lot to try and put on this, but as part of the link, you have a, you show a map. Again, whether it's a real or somewhere out in the Midwest doesn't matter. But gives you definitely, hey, this is what the upland review area looks like, these are.
You know, look.
Could be the background of the whole pamphlet.
It could be the background of the whole pamphlet, although then it gets lost in the background.
Right.
That is a very common thing that I, when I'm talking to people and I say, well, is it in the upland review? What are you talking about? And then when you go ahead to further explain it, that anything from a hundred feet away that you do on that land is going to have an effect a hundred feet away in that pond, stream, river, whatever it is. It puts the pieces together and that's when I hear the, oh, I get it. And I understand, that makes perfect sense now.
Yeah.
So to have that graphic on there, I think is good somehow.
I think the graphic is good, right, because there's just two things, and I believe this is correct, right? It's from water, it's a hundred fifty feet, from wetlands, it's a hundred feet.
That is correct.
So if you show the two out, you know, the two markers to that. But again, you're right, like, we'd have to work with the transparency of that, it's dark enough for you to see it.
Yeah.
Or, because I agree, we have to have some beneficial or useful.
You know, that's probably our biggest hurdle right there is getting people to know what the URA is. Maybe that requires taking up more real estate on this pamphlet. Maybe if it was just, you know, maybe if it was just that simple, showing a pond, showing a hundred feet away from the pond and a hundred and fifty feet away from that pond.
Yeah.
And showing arrows going down, and maybe those arrows are listed as fertilizer, pesticide.
So when I put, I just pull pictures, right, from the town website and this, right? It doesn't mean that these are the pictures that have to be there. So if we were to remove like, say, this one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is a big enough area where we could put those markers in a picture of a pond and, right?
Yeah.
As long as it's not too crowded, so, again, we don't have to have, like, there's a lot of room right here.
Yeah.
Who needs this picture?
You could honestly, probably, you could eliminate the concept of Q and A if you did like the ask before you act as a separate section. And then you just do, what are the wetlands, what are upland review? And you show that picture with the description. So like, even that, like, you're getting the visual right there with those words.
Click here or something and you can get into.
It could be its own page.
I would just caution to, to be careful around upper review area, because you can extend the upper review area more if there is a slope involved down to, if it's, if it's a hundred ninety-five feet away from the, from the wetlands and there's a slope, and it's, it's, it's told, it's told with the slope.
It's a guide, the hundred and hundred and fifty is a guideline.
It's a footnote.
Well, again, I think the goal of this and all of the outreach is to not have people be able to answer those questions on their own, but to come in and ask.
To make them realize that they have to ask.
Because you could say, I was just like, as a joke in my head. I was like, you know, somebody could pace off a hundred feet and be like, I'm good. But maybe, like me, they're not a tall guy, their feet are a little bit smaller, their pieces are a little bit shorter, and they're, they're not actually, they're, they're actually within, you know what I mean? Somebody bigger, you know, whatever, you know what I'm saying?
Right, right.
So they shouldn't be doing it on their own. I think the, the validation and show, or the value in expressing to them what the upland review is, is not to say, make these measurements yourself, but just more so, just because you don't think that you have a wetlands impact on your property does not mean you don't have a wetlands impact on your property. You know, like, that's, I think that's what comes out of.
Something to look for, as opposed to going out with the little wheel and measuring it out. You're like, oh, I'm good, I can, I can just start digging here.
I think, you know, Andrew also hit it on the head, right? Like, maybe just like an asterisk under the picture to say, this should be just merely used as a guideline, but for more information. Click here, you know?
It's like.
Put everything on.
It's too much, it's too much information. It's too much information to put on a pamphlet.
Picture's worth a thousand words, like, I really like the idea of a block that, and, and not something that's too crowded, right? Something where you see two out, you know, outlier lines.
Yep.
With a pond in the middle.
Yep.
And that's it, and you know, one says, you know, so many feet away from whatever and so many, like, just something very simple that's clear to read.
Yep, and then maybe the tagline underneath that says something along the lines of, you know, pesticides or, you know, herbicides that are used in this area wind up in that. Well, it's something along those lines so that they understand, like, why, you know? And quite honestly, I, I'd welcome the calls from people instead of having to chase after them.
Right.
It's, it's very easy to look it up and say, hey, you know, you have something to, to be concerned about and come in and let's, let's figure it out together. And on that, a- a- along the same lines as, as public outreach, I've kind of made it like, if you'll notice, everything that I'm dealing with from a voluntary compliance or, those wetland flags, those, those markers, I'm requiring that of everybody for the same reason. So that we don't hear, I didn't know, I didn't know, I didn't know. Eventually we'll get, you know.
What's the cost of that?
They, they cost the homeowners a dollar fifty apiece.
Oh, yeah, great, wow.
And if you put five of them on your property, the next person that buys your property, it doesn't say that, all it says is wetlands, I would hope that that would throw up a red flag and somebody would say, hey, let me find out what that means.
Right.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say on it anywhere, like, you know, restricted area.
I, I don't think it's the cost of the flags, I think it's the cost of the, you know, the getting somebody to do the soil test, like, that's.
That, you know, yes, and, and I'm not requiring that of every agent approval. Like, if there's a reason for it, then I want them to do it. But quite honestly, like, if I look at the GIS and I see that there is potential wetlands, right? If they're doing something like way far away from it and it's already established lawn, I don't need them to spend whatever the money is, whatever it costs, I don't even know what it costs. I don't need them to spend, but if it's close enough to it, and obviously if there's a stream or something like that, that's one thing. But, you know, to, the way, the way it's written right now, like, somebody who's replacing their shed, they're pulling out an old shed, they're putting a new shed in, in the same place. If it's within the upland review area, they're supposed to get a soil scientist to delineate those wetlands. I, I, I don't see that as beneficial. It, it doesn't add any information to the equation. But yeah, getting the wetland markers up, all, you know, if you have wetlands on your property, and if something came up, I'm asking them to put those, those markers everywhere.
Very good.
Any other comments, so?
So the action is to take, take, take a whack at it, or you want?
I think, uh, let's, let's, let's hand the feedback to, did you guys mark anything up? Or if we hand the feedback to Andrew, right, you're gonna compile.
If anybody has anything jotted down, uh, give it to me. If not, I will listen to these minutes, I'll, I'll listen to this recording again. And then I'll circle around with you, Mark, because the graphics part of this is not me.
I don't, I don't know that my, my chicken scratch is gonna be effective for following my thoughts, so I'll, I can write up some notes and send them.
Why don't you write up notes?
If you would, I would, I would appreciate, I would appreciate anything like that, yeah, yeah.
And if anybody has, like, we talked about pictures, if anybody has pictures that you feel might be good, like, feel free to send them to both Andrew and myself and I'll try to look something in. But I like the idea of visualization as opposed to I have to read a nine font, you know?
Why don't you guys kind of compile this a little bit more, if you guys want to send it to me, I can have my designer.
Perfect.
And there might be something on this, you know, I was just handing this to Mark, it's from DEEP, about our, it's like a, just a basic on. About inland wetlands and water courses, so, yeah.
So yeah, this week, if, if you could jot down, you know, recu also, like.
Yeah, no, definitely, I'm, I'll, I'll try to get, if I see any, anything, you know, that I think is relevant, like the little sticker, not the sticker, but, you know.
Try to, try to boil it down to.
Like actionable, got it.
And don't, don't overload me with too much information that's never gonna make it onto this, you know what I mean? Like, so if we could.
We're trying to cut down.
We're trying to cut down, not add to.
Oh, yeah.
But like, really like the, the, the highlights, the, the, the big points, all right?
Great feedback, yeah.
Is there something that we could, for outreach, is there something that we can do for, say, wetlands markers? Of having like, not necessarily like an event, but just something that's like, you could have, if, if you want to, you could put it in the Facebook page or whatever.
Come get your free wetland markers.
Yeah, come get some.
Go buy a big bundle of those at Home Depot for like ten bucks and you get like fifty of them.
And then like.
They don't say wetland on them, but maybe we could do something.
We, Andrew, maybe we could work that into our site, right? The, just talk to IT, I mean, that's probably not gonna go against the structure of how the site is structured, right? Just like a little comment like that and put a big box on your desk and they could come and see you, right?
Like where, to give out these wetland markers and put them on your property?
Like that says, right, like a little note somewhere that says, you know, well, we could wordsmith it appropriately, right? But to get wetland markers, you know, come see us, we have them, you know, just so they know that we have them and they don't have to go spend a dollar or two dollars per marker. Uh, my point is, Facebook great, but maybe also our site as we're building out the site a little bit, you know? We could talk about it offline, but.
Okay.
There's where the people that want to do it, that didn't know that they could do it, could come in and get the flags and put them up. You know, just to, just to see, you could even, and if they have questions, they're there and they can ask those questions. And then you wouldn't have to worry about having to go out and, you know, be like, oh, why'd you do this? This is the wetlands, this needs to be marked kind of thing, it's already done. And then that also ends the, you know, them being like, if they come and they get the flags and they put them up, then they'll be like, oh, I didn't know this was here. It's like, you put the flags up yourself.
Right.
You know, and it's that.
I like, I like, I like the idea. They have a graphic.
I don't know if there's any restrictions to what they should look like, but if not.
Just wanna, if they're gonna have a graphic, a graphic of the wetland marker on a tree or just a graphic of a wetland marker, it might be, you know, would be something interesting and salient.
I've got a curious point here, so Amazon sells these orange flags, now they don't say wetland, but. It's seven dollars for fifty.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Not like they're expensive.
Colors, different colors, I think are reserved, right, like when you call.
Call before you dig. Those are very temporary, so. Those, those, you mow them over. The, the wetland markers that we have, you nail them to a tree, I'm even letting people, they're metal. I'm even letting people put them on metal posts, I don't care how they get out there, I just want to see them out there.
I mean, I could make those for you too.
Okay, okay, yeah, they're metal, uh, yeah.
Okay, you can get them like a little six by ten something.
Yeah, they're, they're probably six inch round, yes, exactly.
Pop it into.
Yeah, and I'm letting people nail them on trees, so long as they're substantial, healthy looking trees. Just to make it easier for them to put them up.
You should have a couple of markers here.
Yeah.
That's a good.
For our meetings, just have it on the table. Just for exposure, let people see it, have an understanding that, that's something that is available, that we support and.
I like that idea too.
Yeah. Handful of them here and.
Yep.
As the applicants are coming in.
Yeah, they are supposed to pay for them. I, I understand.
Dollar fifty each.
You have some in your office?
Yeah.
We'll take a look at that.
So I actually like that, especially if they come in because they're breaking a violation, right? Then definitely hand them one of those.
That comes regardless, because it, if they've made, if they've created a violation, that is always part of the remediate, or whatever the solution is to their violation. I'm making them purchase these and put them up so that if it's not them, it's the next owner of that property.
Right.
Knows that those are wetlands back there.
Good idea.
I was charging this, that's what I was saying, like, nice if they're free, but I don't think, a dollar fifty is not a big deal, really.
No, not a, you know, I wasn't of them. I wasn't saying that, but just having them here, visual, part of the process.
Right, right, right.
I mean, like, like I was saying, if we had like something where we can just tell, or, you know, have people come in for them, that way it ends the, I mean, it's, it's almost like a, a hemorrhaging, I mean, every, every single time.
I don't know, I didn't know, I didn't know.
Whereas if they're out now, then you're basically healing that wound before it starts getting worse.
You, you kind of have to make it appealing too, right? You know, come in for a marker and a cupcake or whatever, you know?
You could do it on birthday or something.
Where do you get these? They sell for a dollar fifty, holy crap, that's cheap.
Yeah, I, you know what, I do not know where they come, where they came from, uh, but there's a drawer full of them.
All right, ready to adjourn? So, yeah.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, we, we'll go back to that, so.
Who motioned?
Mr. Smith motioned to adjourn, Mr. Kelly, second, all in favor? We're all adjourned.